And to the Republic for which it stands, or our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And all please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Vanessa, please hold the roll.
Commissioner Vogler.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here. I saw Gio over there. I wasn't sure if Chris was having a little poker. I make sure it was Vanessa, not Chris. Um, row officer reports and comments. Harry, do you have anything to report? But we've got already on the agenda.
Glad to be here.
Good to have you with us. Uh, public comments. Uh, we have any public comment before the board today?
Pandemic.
What do you got, Shirley?
Oh, yes. First of all, Morgan, I want to thank you for doing such a good job.
Oh, thank you.
You're an inspiration to the county. Now, why don't you?
I don't know what inspiration. Why would I say that now?
Yes, you are. So here's what I want to say. I've read your comments and your report about what's going on with the economic development. Okay. Um, I'm very upset about it. There has to be some accountability. Anytime you're in charge, there should always be an account of everything, not just the money, but everything. Now, in this case, nobody knows what kind of money we're talking about. No one knows who all is involved. We kind of know who's in charge, but I'm not going to mention any names. But we need to make some changes and quick. And I want to say this, Morgan, you're not going to fight this battle alone.
Well, I appreciate that, Shirley, and I I agree with you a hundred percent on changes necessary to the to the Economic Development Corp. Um, it's a long time coming, and I know we're starting to see more and more companies leave Lawrence County, most recently yesterday with Apple's. Um, you know, we we got to do something to reverse the trend.
Look at Shenango out there where I live. It's a mess.
Yeah, it's a floor building disaster. We don't know how to clean it up.
No, no. Well, once we get this fiasco taken care of, I think we'll be able to make some changes.
I agree.
People will be coming into the county.
I agree. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming into that. Always.
You're very welcome.
Always.
I'm not going to tell you how much. And make sure it's paid to them.
Take care of it. Don't you worry. Any any other public comments? So you're around for none. Uh, we'll move on to fiscal and contractual. Uh, we have specifically no repository properties on deck for today. Uh, we do have one advertising advertising for bids or proposals here. Um, we might have the actual ad. If we don't, I'll just make note of it, and I think we're voting on a resolution officially approved later on in the meeting. Um, but one of the things that the board is starting to spin up is is looking at broadband expansion across Lawrence County. Uh, and and we've identified specific areas of Lawrence County that are either unserved or underserved as it relates to broadband, specifically the southwest portion of Lawrence County here and around Enid Valley, um, as well as the portion of Lawrence County, um, and around McConnell's Mill and in uh, uh, Neshanick and Wilmington Township, which sort of forms a T on Route 376 and Route 208. Uh, and so we are issuing an RFP for broadband expansion services. Uh, the template itself, actually, we we just stole from uh, Washington County, who implemented the same uh, type of of um, RFP and onboarded a consultant about six months ago, I think. Um, but our goal is is with this RFP to be able to utilize the services of professional companies to identify. We know what areas were weakened. The question is which areas are low hanging fruit. In other words, if we spend um, five hundred thousand dollars or if we require uh, five uh, five hundred thousand dollars for broadband expansion, um, are what area would be we be on board with the most houses, most businesses with that five hundred thousand? This makes more sense, you know, if you've got, um, you know, uh, two thousand houses um, for five hundred thousand dollars or, you know, five hundred houses for five hundred thousand dollars. We're going to go with the two thousand houses, uh, just to get the just to get the ball rolling there. Uh, but we don't have the ability internally to be able to um, really leverage and assess the data out there to make those determinations. Uh, so we're hoping to onboard with a a consultant um, who is more familiar with with putting together this, what they call polygons for housing and broadband expansion services. Do you have any questions on that? And like I said, we'll be doing a formal uh, a resolution later on in the meeting. Uh, note, we've seen a bunch of proposals. Say, we do have warrant registers from July twenty-two, July twenty, and July eighteen, and I'll give my colleagues a minute. My colleague is going to check that over.
I will move for acceptance of the warrant registers as submitted.
All right, I will second that. We have motion to second for a discussion hearing, none question on the motion. All in favor, please. I'm probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Up next, the uh, excuse me, the minutes from Tuesday, July twelve, twenty twenty-two. I know we did not have a meeting. Um, last week, there wasn't a whole lot of of business or contractual um, contracts were needed to pass. This week is very different, as we will soon see. Uh, but again, I'll 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 give uh, in a minute, check over those minutes and then take a uh, a motion to approve. The reason I noted that is that we won't have it from last week.
I move for uh, adoption of the minutes.
I will second the motion. Secondly, for a discussion hearing, none question on the motion. All. Um, all in favor, please. I'm probably saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have one written communication today. It's Act fourteen notifications required by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Um, the, I'll just read the first bit here. The purpose of this notice is to inform you of the intent of Claire Hatcher to submit an application for a new national pollutant discharge elimination system individual permit to discharge sewage effluent from small flow treatment facilities and a new water quality management permits of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the following. Um, it's an address located at one twenty Old Colony Drive, Newcastle, PA, one six one oh five into Shannick Township. Uh, it's a single resident sewage treatment plan to replace a malfunctioning septic system currently serving deep disney. Uh, as I always try to note, we don't have approval authority over these permits or a permit uh, request. We're only required to be notified by the requirement set forth in the laws. Um, if there's any questions or comments on that, I'll take a motion to approve.
All right.
Move to accept. I'll second the motion. Secondly, for a discussion hearing, none question on the motion. All in favor, please. I'm probably saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Staff reports. Tim, I know you have a staff report.
I do.
What do you have? Can you be able to approach the match?
Thank you. Morning, Commissioners. I'm Tim Germaine, Director of Elections, and uh, I just want to say with the election upcoming, where residents are getting uh, the Voter Participation Center and Center for Voter Information, which is a political advocacy group, they are sending out applications for people to apply for mail-in ballots or to register. I just want to make it clear to the public that we have nothing to do with that. Uh, with the increase of that, I've been getting an increase of hate mail. We're trying to have a few examples here. And uh, yesterday, I got one that I had to take to the DA's. Because it was pretty suspicious. Nothing was happened with it, but I just want to let it know to the public that we will not tolerate any of that.
No, we won't, and I think it's absolutely despicable that people are sending the elections office mail that needs to be referred to the district attorney.
Yes, sir.
Um. That's 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 despicable. It's wrong. Um, you guys in 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 the elections office um, are professional. You do a phenomenal job at administering the elections.
Thank you.
I've never seen even an element of partisan bias out of your office. The only thing, that office, the only thing when the Board of Elections convenes, um, that the Board of Elections and the Department of Voter Services is interested in is administering a a safe, um, fair and accurate election. Um, and we have achieved that consistently over the last however many years, as long as this board's been in existence and into prior boards as well, um, under both yourself, Director Allison, and the directors that came before. Um, I also want to note that the what they're receiving, what potential voters are receiving from this group. They are not ballots.
That's correct.
And the only entity capable of distributing ballots is us.
That's correct.
So these are just applications for ballots.
Right. If you don't want to do it, just simply throw it away.
And the other thing I I want to note, let's say a voter sends in, voter receives five or six of those applications, and they send five or six applications in. What happens?
They become duplicates, and then we just set the duplicate aside, keep the original one that we've got to make sure that you get your ballot.
And the but they're only getting one, even if they send in sixteen applications, they're getting one ballot.
One ballot. That's right.
Yep.
It's it it flags on our system when you apply for one. So if I see again, oh, we already sent one, so.
Yep.
Yes, but I just want to make it clear that there are going to be more of this uh, voter advocacy of these applications coming in the mail. So if you want to do it, that's fine. We'll accept them, but uh, you're kind of wasting your time with all this.
Mm-hmm.
So.
The other thing, I'm sure Dan will concur with me on this one, this county will not tolerate any threats um, towards our staff. Um, and the people that are since they're issuing hate mail, um, and issuing potential threats, um, are absolutely despicable.
Yes, I agree. But that's all I have to say, gentlemen. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Before, Dan, do you have any, no other comment?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any additional staff reports, public remarks, are you on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to Commissioner Reports and Comments. Dan, you're on deck.
Well, Mr. Chairman, given the lengthy agenda we have today, I'll hold my comments till next week.
I will, I will follow your lead. Um, seeing proved in this in this circumstance. All right, we're moving on now. We have a couple resolutions from planning. Um, first on deck, Vanessa, what number is this?
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two.
Good morning.
Good morning. Becky, how you doing today?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing good. What do we have going on for one sixty-two? This is Hudson Forestry Services.
Uh, yes. This is actually, I believe, a few weeks ago, maybe the end of June, we we had an RFP for um, our timber harvest. So we've.
At Quaker Falls, right?
At Quaker Falls, yes. So um, we've selected uh, the highest bidder for our income, um, which is JM Logging and Lumber, LLC. So the actual agreement is with JM Logging and Lumber, even though it's, you know, horse Hudson Forestry is our forester. So the actual contract is with JM Logging and Lumber. Um, the the money has already been received, um, so we are just kind of going formality wise as far as getting this resolution signed.
Sure.
Okay.
Um, the uh, notice is whereas the Forest Manager for Services commissioned fifteen percent, um, that's basically how that individual was paid, right?
Correct.
So the Forest Manager being Hudson, he did a phenomenal job. I've never seen a a a thicker package that relates to tree clearings in my life. Um, but that that was part of that agreement, which there wasn't upfront charge for it. He's just receiving a portion of whatever we sell the timber for.
Exactly, yes. And actually, we we commented a good time, actually, because I talked to him just last week and it started to fall.
Yeah.
So we did pretty good for what, you know, first time in.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
There'll be more of these, right? And this is the year one harvest, and we have that whole plan laid out.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Okay. Dan, any questions?
No questions.
Um, I will take a a motion to approve one sixty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I will second. The motion is second. Any further discussion during non-question on the motion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have the competitive CDBG. That'll be one sixty-three.
Yes, this is um, in cooperation again with um, LCAP. We are proposing um, a grant that is due August first, which is Monday. So as you can see, we're we're kind of going for the whole thing. The public facilities, um, that's a collaboration of funding to improve a residential facility to reunite families in CYS. Um, and then the other three items are the continuation of our TEAMS program, the emergency assistance with meals for elderly people.
Absolutely. I will note, um, because Dan, I'm sure you're looking over those and then asking the question of where is Elwood? I walked into uh, LCAP offices for reasons unrelated yesterday. Um, most of the bullshit. Um, but Elwood still has money in their fund, um, that allows for the TEAMS program to to continue uh, without issue. Uh, but they have Elwood, under the CDBGCV program, which is the emergency COVID dollars through CDBG, they originally had uh, the bulk of their money designated for business grants. Nobody applied for this. Uh, and so as a result, they reallocated to the TEAMS and their funding teams through through that program. And the public facilities is for, obviously, uh, maybe not obviously, uh, will be uh, the Frumell complex to continue their work um, out there. But all this money needs to be spent at the state level, I believe, by next June, I want to say, by the end of the next fiscal. Um, and so they're they're just trying, the state's trying to get out of the door, and we're going to, we're going to try and take as much as we possibly can.
Absolutely.
Um, questions, Dan?
Under number one, after the therefore, it states the county shall prepare and submit a grant in the projected amount of the dollar on this list. Should the word "application" be there after the word "grant"? Are we are we are applying? Are we honest?
Yes.
I'd I'd like to uh, add the word, if if you would agree, uh, the word "application" after the word "grant."
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Other than that, I have no other questions.
Anything additional, Becky?
Yeah.
Great. Um, uh, we're going to continue to chase after as as much money as the state and federal government will give us.
And I'll get that too.
I'll take a a motion for one sixty-three. So move. Second, we have motion to second for the discussion hearing, none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, we have twelve CYS resolutions.
Yes.
Mike, it's up to you to make my day a good day.
It's gonna be a great day.
Please, please don't track this up. A lot of these, for context, a lot of these are, all of these are renewals.
All of these are renewals?
Every every year, every start of the new fiscal, we have to renew our CYS contract, and so this is one of those ministerial uh, things that comes before us. We've gone, we've literally passed these contracts in good old years.
We have, I have one C well, uh, Jessica Robert, uh, three in-home providers and eight place providers. Now, this includes in that packet, I give you a three-year look back of what the rates were and what they're proposing, and everything was approved uh, to the director to prove the rates.
And we have, I mean, the state is, you know, I obviously, we have inflation that's pushing everything. Um, pushing our costs across the board right now, as is with everybody. I mean, the county's exempt from that. Um, the state is increasing its allocation to us in anticipation for that that inflationary pressure. That's correct.
But I'll be honest with you, a lot of them, we're only going up like three, uh, zero percent, seven percent, zero percent, uh.
In other words, our negotiators did a good job holding line regardless of nine percent inflation.
Right, yeah, yeah. There's a few up there, but um, a lot, uh, one of them hasn't had an increase in years and years and years. Uh, matter of fact, Crossroads, for example. The rate of the increase looks big, but in theory, uh, they raised it uh, fifty dollars, or the girls are fifty dollars on on the on the boys, but they haven't had a decrease in a long time. But they're willing to keep these the children that are in here now. They're not going to reach them.
What's the cause for the CAC, John?
All right. Behind the CAC, we, they lost a hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant. There's a little synopsis there.
Oh.
What happened? United CAC. Got it there? So basically, this is how it's going to work. I'll kind of give you to you in a nutshell, because I had to, um. So they lost a federal grant money of a hundred and twelve thousand. So CAC gets reimbursed, the county's responsible for twenty percent, which is thirty-two thousand. If you notice out of the other program, parents as teachers, just seventy-four thousand. They're going to take thirty-two thousand away from that. Now, it doesn't show up that. They're going to take thirty-two thousand away from that, which is going to help reduce the load of the hundred and twelve. Now, we're still going to fund a hundred and twelve, but we're going to do it through two budgets, twenty-two and twenty-three of fifty-six thousand. And then they're going to come back and resubmit amendment to reduce parents as teachers from seventy-four thousand down to forty-two thousand. Basically.
What is the total increase cost to the county?
A hundred and twelve.
What's the total increase cost to the county?
A hundred, well, the grant money, the hundred and twelve, is going to be the.
Yeah, what's the cost, what's the county share?
Well, we're going to fund a hundred and twelve thousand, two two budgets of fifty-six thousand. Now, it's not going to increase the budget. They're going to reallocate funds to make up the difference.
Well, but hang on. So we've got family reunifications increasing to, it's now at one sixty, one fifty-six.
Right.
It was at forty-eight, one fifty-six.
Right.
So you're talking a hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase.
Yes.
Minus thirty-two thousand dollars of the removal from parents to teachers.
Right.
So you're talking about an eighty thousand dollar increase.
Well, and this is where John's going to have to explain the difference on that. We're still going to fund the hundred and twelve thousand.
What do you mean? I don't mean to be like.
No, I know, I know.
Here's here's what I'd like to do with this one. If it's all right with Dan, I I'd like to talk to John on it, um, before passing it, just because that's a significant.
No, no, and and I tried to get it straight, because John, obviously, is out with.
Yeah.
Surgery, and I kind of, the thirty-two thousand, even though they're reducing it, but he's still saying we're funding the hundred and twelve thousand.
Not if, not if we say we're not.
And uh.
Because that's still even with the twenty percent local share, that's still sixteen thousand dollars in additional, in additional monies.
Right, right.
Um, which I'm fine with. My problem is
Yeah.
the budget.
Right.
Where are we getting the sixteen from?
He's saying that the fiscal says if they can come up, they can, uh, to fifty-six thousand using the twenty-two budget and the fifty-six thousand twenty-three will not increase the budget at all.
Yeah.
Reallocate the money.
I I'd like to talk, I want to.
No, no, I agree.
Nothing against, nothing against you at all.
No, I know that. This is the hard, this is the hardest one to try to explain. And with him being away, I mean, you know, I talked to him on the phone. It was hard for me to, because I didn't negotiate.
Sure.
Yeah.
Let me, um.
But everything else, you know, all the other ones.
Are you going to be working with on that one, Dan?
Yeah, I'm willing to, when we get to it, I'm willing to to move to table.
Right.
But before we move off of that one,
Mm-hmm.
I realize that one wouldn't, if I'm if I'm correct, that would be one sixty-five. We still have one sixty-four, but
Yeah.
on on the CAC, um, can you clarify, our resolution indicates that their address is twelve eleven Wilmington Avenue. I thought they were out in the Union Township. Or am I mistaken?
No, CAC is.
Well, on this resolution, it says Children's Advocacy Center of Lawrence County, twelve eleven Wilmington Avenue. Is that maybe a typo?
Is that Jameson?
They're affiliated with Jameson. Are they not that?
Yeah, I just, what I did is I just got the address wrote in.
I think Mr. Boyd just answered.
Yeah, because they're a part of UPMC.
Yeah, that's probably why it's listed as. Okay, thank you.
And what I tried to do is go off the W nine.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the address that I use on the resolution.
That's what I did. That's good, that's good. Okay. Thank you both. Um, LCAP forty-four percent. They're safe. What's the, what's the increase there? Yeah, but increase is under five percent. I remember.
No, no, LCAP is three percent, three percent.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, that is.
Yeah, this this is the, that was last year.
That's my, yep, I got you.
Yeah, so most of them are all in line, uh.
Yep, there. Seven percent. And you should cross-rate and receive zero percent for a number of years. That's the reason for this.
Yeah, yeah, and they're willing to, the kids that are already there, they're not that charged in the good way.
Totally agree. Got you. Uh, Luther and Services, fifteen percent.
Okay, yeah. They were asking a hundred and thirteen. Uh, not a hundred and thirteen percent, a hundred and thirteen, uh, the rate.
Okay.
Okay, we come back at ninety-nine something. John come back to ninety-nine, and we agreed on a hundred.
Okay.
So they were asking about thirteen dollars more.
How many kids?
Uh, Luther. Uh, CYS, I think.
That's in-home, in-home?
Uh, no, no.
What is it, institutional?
Yeah.
Okay. Actually, that's not a problem. What are your thoughts on this?
Yeah.
All right, so with, yeah, with the exception of, unless, Dan, you have any, anything on any of them? Um, one sixty-five, which we'll do a table on until next week. Um, Dan, you have any, you have additional questions? No, I'm.
We skipped one sixty-four.
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, I just wanted to know, because I'm trying to, because we're going to do one sixty-four, table one sixty-five, and then do a whole one, just so we don't have to go through every individual one if you're a member.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So CAC, right?
Yeah, CAC is one of the, we're on hold on. And I like them. They're great people. They're a good program. I just want to know where.
John can explain it a lot better.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, because again, we're at a, we're at the budget's tight right now, inflationary pressure and everything.
Right.
I'm fine increasing, I just want to know where the money's coming from.
Right. Yeah, that's no problem.
So, all right, I'll take a motion for uh, one sixty-four.
So move.
Second, we have motion to second. Any further discussion here, none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'll take a motion uh, to table one sixty-five until next week.
Move to table.
Second, we have motion to second during further discussion, hearing none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Table that. And then I'll take a motion to approve one sixty-six through one seventy-five, which are the remaining CYS resolutions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that. Uh, we have motion to second. Any further discussion, hearing none question on the motion. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so I think we have to cuss up is uh, is uh, CAC, but I'm sure we can do a good resolution.
Oh, yeah. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
All right, up next.
No.
So I actually wasn't as painful, even with the questions, I wasn't as painful as I thought it was going to be. You did a good job. Uh, Scott with uh, MHS, you're up on deck next. Same situation. We've got a number of renewals.
That'd be much, much easier.
What do you got, Lawrence?
These are all renewal contracts for our early intervention program. There is no dollar amounts attached to these, as these are entitlement services, so if you're the um, Illinois Board of Receiving this, you get it. It's all state and federally reimbursed with no cost to the county. But we do need contracts to connect our residents to these. But we do need contracts to connect our residents to these services, so... This morning, to renew, uh... Well, now, if you would like, I can name them quickly and tell you sort of what they do, or however you want me to present them. Since there's no money attached, it's basically us connecting a program to a...
These are all, these are all renewals based on, based on the different needs that we see in our community, right?
There are providers from Mercer Beaver, Allegheny, Lawrence. Where they're exactly at, Dan, I...
That's all right.
Our default to my office expert.
But none of these are new.
No.
And, and are you experiencing any, any difficulties or challenges with any of them?
No, we, during the year, as a need comes up and we don't have a provider that can meet any quickly, you know, I'll come over and add a contract here and there during the year, but as for now, no, I don't have any problems.
Okay, here's what we'll do, just so we can get sort of a flavor of the different contracts, and let me just pick three real fast to review. What does a global word spits do?
These are, it's an interpreter translation service, so if we have a newborn, if the family speaks Spanish, we use them to interpret family to the provider, so that's actually a translation service.
Positive steps therapy.
This, they do speech therapy, physical and occupational therapy, and special instruction, so the... Disability, the... Eight therapy services for it, so...
Uh, Western Pennsylvania School for Deaf, I got a pretty good idea of that, I want those.
So this will be hearing testing for... Special instructions.
Yeah, again, this is all paid for out of state.
Not a, not a cost to the county, and the state makes this whole at the end of the year, depending on how many referrals we get, which we don't know that at this time, so...
And again, all, all for, it actually ties in well with CYS, it's all for the development of small children.
It is all for the development. Just actually seeing what the new budget will be, there's...
There's a lot of...
There's a lot coming our way, I just don't know where it'll be at this point, so...
I'll tell you, well, I, I think Mike did a phenomenal job, but I wish CYS cost structure was the same as yours.
We have it, we can...
We've been wishing that for years.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. All right, Dan, unless you have any questions on any of the providers?
No questions.
So I'll take a motion to approve resolutions, starting with one seventy-six, Achieva, to one eighty-seven, Western PA School for Deaf.
So move.
Well, second, we have motion of second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, Paul, just the next couple Tuesdays, I'll be contracting here, so I'll see you next, next week.
And then, what is this?
We, we do not meet on the ninth.
Okay, very good.
Do meet next week.
Okay, great, thank you, thanks.
Footroll, it's real fast to get to the Marquette. Bear with me for a moment here. All right, this will be one eighty-eight. This is, is it our, our financial consulting services, well, more accurately, investment management for our county pension fund, this is the same company that's always done it, we'll have the same, Sarah Wilson will still be here. Um, the company, they just went through a series of mergers, where the names have changed, so we need updates in contracts, as simply as they're related to the names. Everything else will remain constant, there will be no service changes, no interruption in services, this is more ministerial than anything. Um, I'll note that a straw poll of the retirement board found that all members of the board were amenable to this contract, but ultimately contractual authority falls with the Board of Commissioners, and so that, we gotta take a formal vote to approve this, this updated contract.
I will move for resolution one eighty-eight.
I will second that, we have a motion of the second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, one eighty-nine, after a year and a half of negotiations, we have an ASME contract. Which ASME represents a number of departments under the Commissioners, the most prominent of which would be Children and Youth Services, but they also represent our Mental Health and Developmental Services Department, our Maintenance Department, Tax Claim Assessment, Veterans, Voters. Uh, they represent the Controllers and the Treasurer's Offices. Uh, I'm trying to think if there's any other offices, I think I said Maintenance. Am I missing any of the offices that've been covered though?
Yeah.
Yeah. This was a, a hard and, and, and well-negotiated, not the power itself, but this, this, this contract took some time, uh, is what I'm trying to say. We went back and forth for months on it. Sticking point was insurance, thankfully, we came to a resolution on that. It's a contract I think both sides had to give, and neither side has walked in the way, were one hundred percent happy, which in my mind, it's probably a decent agreement. Um, I'll note that as soon as I can find it here, that wage rates for ASME employees... Getting that here, it's a big contract. Should be two, two and a quarter, two and a quarter, but let me... Yep, here it is, two, two and a quarter, two and a quarter, um, on the wage rate increases for active, certain active employees, um, for employees who we have yet to hire, otherwise when a position becomes vacant, then we onboard it, a new employee, the base rate increases for positions at one, one point two five and one point three seven five, of course, the contract twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. This is well under the current rate of inflation, um, which again helps us keep our costs down, um, and will help us to avoid increasing taxes, or cutting other expenditures, or laying people off. In two thousand and twenty-three, um, the union was amenable to coming down on that. Also recognizing that in previous years, they received above the rate of inflation. So this is, you know, the, this is coming back around on that end. Uh, for health insurance, we're moving them from three percent premium right now to four percent, five percent, and six percent. That was the big sticking point throughout tech, throughout the negotiations. Uh, they did not want to increase their insurance premiums at all. You know, it's, it's, it's a brave new world since, since the nineteen nineties and early two thousands, when, uh, when government employees did not have to pay any portion of premium. You know, I wish we would have been able to get a little bit higher, I'm sure they wish that they would have been able to keep it at three percent, this was, this was our compromise on that. I'll note that a number of, of the fringe benefits have been eliminated in this, the, the most significant of which are vacation payouts at the end of the year, which last year, I believe, cost the county around a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars organization-wide, um, so the ASME portion of vacation payout will no longer be applicable. Uh, it also eliminates the sick day payouts, um, which again, as, as we saw during COVID, it's, it's an incentive for employees to come to work sick, uh, which, which, uh, I think we learned is, is a poor way to structure incentives, so that's, that's eliminated in this. The other item of note is that we've created, and I think this will really help out CYS retention, is we've created a step ladder for CYS employees, as opposed to, under the current system, um, we have three caseworker threes, five caseworker twos, and ten or eleven caseworker ones. Uh, and under the current system, a caseworker one could be working at CYS for ten years. If caseworker two doesn't resign or retire, they're not getting bumped up to a caseworker two position. This contract actually allows, after a set period of months, those employees to advance in CYS. It gives them a little bit of a ladder, it gives them something to look forward to, where after fifteen months, they move to a caseworker two position, and after additional fifteen months, they move to a caseworker three position. Uh, it's also applicable, I believe, for case screener one to case screener two. Again, but the hope there is that you're gonna have a number of our caseworker ones that are willing to stick it out for a little bit longer, because they're able to definitively see a timeline where they're gonna get a, a, a promotion and the accompanying raise for that promotion. So I, you know, I'm really hopeful this will help us with some of our, our CYS retention efforts. Those are sort of the highlights. Dan, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
All right. Uh, again, you know, there's, there's a lot of give and take on this one, it took a year and a half to accomplish. Um, there were times where the debate was heated, there were times where, uh, you know, we walked in with requests that ASME accepted, that we weren't expecting they would accept, there were times that ASME walked in with requests that we weren't expecting they would make. Um, for example, increasing the probationary time period from ninety days to a hundred and eighty days, uh, which is represented, reflected in this contract, they actually made that request because they felt that it was better for us, specifically for Children and Youth Services, to, to have an understanding of, number one, whether that employee wanted that specific job track, or number two, you know, whether we thought at the county level and at the supervisory level of the CYS, that that person may be a good fit for, for that position. Um, but I have a copy of it here, anybody that wants a copy would be happy to distribute it afterwards. Debbie, Nick, if you guys want, in fact, Vanessa, if you just be able to send a copy of that, being that guy, that way, they're gonna ask.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second, we have a motion of second, any further discussion, hearing none, uh, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and that puts that song to bed. Up next, one ninety, I'm not gonna go over this in depth, we sort of did at the very beginning. This is a resolution to officially submit a request for proposals for broadband services. Do you have any questions on that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the, the anticipated expenditures were in, we're hoping will be covered through American Rescue Plan.
They all, they all will be, yes.
I'll move for resolution one ninety.
I'll second that, motion of the second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, one ninety-one. Um, this is a budget amendment, um, again, we're sort of coming to the end, we came to the end of the year as it relates to Mental Health and Developmental Services. Their accounts fluctuate based on the need of our community, and so they've just been moving some money around to accommodate. You know, there were a little less ID community, or a little more ID community services needed, and we got more ID-based funding to account for those services, so not neutral to the budget. And, uh, yeah, I'll take a motion to approve one ninety-one, let's get it moved. Second, motion of second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. One ninety-two, we received an additional allocation from the ERAP program, that's the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, federal government came down with during COVID. Um, some other counties didn't expend some of their funds, and, and the, the state determined there was some additional need in Lawrence County for rental relief, um, for COVID-nineteenth related instances. So this is just increasing the revenue fund for that program by the additional allocation made by the state, and increasing the, uh, uh, company expense fund for the new ERAP funded. Unless there are any questions on that, Dan, I'll take a motion for one ninety-two.
I'll make that motion.
Second, we have a motion of second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, we have a number of administrative transfers, jail, um, two thousand dollars from the contingency fund to the travel and training fund for the jail, um, the ward's been sending some more people down to some trainings. And so that the move from their contingency fund to, um, the county, to their travel and training will help accommodate the additional training of, of, uh, our new fully-staffed jail, fully-staffed for the first time thanks to the efforts of, of Board Molester and Director King. Um, magistrate district court for Rick Russo, moving from his contingency to his maintenance, to cover some additional funds out of the maintenance. Uh, also, Rick, moving twelve hundred bucks from contingency to materials and supplies. They're ordering new, uh, new transitionary materials for the office move. Uh, I know Rick's probably too excited about that. Um, but this is new letterhead, new envelopes, business cards, address stands, et cetera, with a new office, office address on it. Court, seven thousand from their contingency to jurors, um, we've had some more trials this year than we were anticipating, and as a result of that, we're moving some money from the court contingency into there. Court contingency, ten thousand from their contingency to materials and supplies. Again, they're, they're, they're expending a significant amount of materials and supplies up there. Uh, they have it in their contingency, I made sure that it wasn't their contingency. So they're, they're, they're flexing their money to accommodate some additional material supplies purchases. MHDS, uh, some telephone and internet expenses were higher than anticipated, so MHDS is moving some money from their contingency account to telephone and internet, getting through the rest of the year. And that's what we have there. Do you have any questions on this?
No questions, no sir.
I will take a motion to approve administrative transfers A through F.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, we have motion of second, any further discussion, hearing none, question on the motion, favorably some if I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we'll continue to table one four one, um, for the time being, unless you have any steps for that. No wardens on the table for introductions for final action. Uh, next Commissioners' meeting will be Tuesday, or August second, twenty twenty-two, at ten AM in this room. Dan, as you noted, we won't be here the week after, as, as, uh, you read it, Joe will be at, at CCAP. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang back and do everything in my power to not burn the place down. Planning Commissioners' meeting on Wednesday, August tenth, in the Shenanga Township Municipal Building, and this is the first announcement, there is an opening on the Lawrence County Airport Authority, I do believe, will probably receive a re-submit for that, just based on my conversations with Chairman Ferris. Uh, any additional public comments?
No, Dan, I would like to thank you for everything you do, you're doing, very good job. And Morgan, until we get to the bottom of it, we will...
Oh, don't you worry, Joe.
We will be working.
We're gonna keep fighting, don't you worry.
We sure are, we sure are.
Uh, any additional public comment? Seeing none, I will adjourn the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners.
Oh, and all for everything we have here. It's official. Oh, and then speaking of problems.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're still on the, uh...